Good evening. This meeting will come to order. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals, December 2016 meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag, United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Soto?
Here.
Mr. Vicino?
Here.
Mr. Tizola?
Here.
Mr. Haberman?
Here.
Ms. Ferrante?
Here.
Mr. Dubois?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
Also present, Meg Green, our Recording Secretary, and Stephen Harris, our Zoning Officer. If you feel there's a member on this commission that might be a conflict of interest to your application, please let us know. Otherwise, we will proceed.
Item number one, 902 East Broadway, MVP, Zone R5, Robert Tobin, architect for Corrine Crane, owner of various sections 3-1-4-1, south yard setback to five feet where 10 feet required, north front yard setback to 7.8 feet where 10 feet required, south side yard setback to 3.1 feet where five feet required, north side yard setback to four feet where five feet required, northeast rear yard setback to 10 feet where 20 feet required, section 4-1-4, south front yard deck projection to 4.5 feet where eight feet permitted, west rear yard stair projection to six feet where 16 permitted, various sections 6-3-2, expansion of non-conforming structure.
Good evening. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Robert Tobin, Robert L. Tobin, architect, 115 Wigwam Lane, Stratford, Connecticut. My clients are looking at putting together a retirement home as a coupling of--
Can you pull that microphone just a little closer to you? Yes, thank you.
Is that better? Does that work? Okay. My clients are looking at establishing a retirement home here in Milford between a couple that's just recently connected over the last couple of years. The existing owner, Corrine Crane, has owned the property for 10 years plus, and we are looking at taking what is basically a summer cottage, raising it up for flood purposes to meet the FEMA flood regulations, and converting it into livable, long-term space with a master bedroom, master bathroom, a guest bedroom, a guest bath, and that's the genesis of the project. What I tried to do in the design of the project was keep the project within the setbacks of the existing house initially, which really didn't work because the entire first floor of this house is a cathedral ceiling. So short of demolishing the existing house and starting over, I looked at an approach at developing an addition on the rear of the house, and that addition generated the additional variances because what I'm trying to do is match the existing size of the house and just extending rearward on both sides, and in the rear of the property, demolishing the existing garage, which then will allow me to, you know, build the addition and the deck in the rear without having to try and work within the setbacks of the property as the zoning would allow. So when you look at the front yard setback, the first item on your variance list, you'll know the existing, we're looking, we're asking, it's a five-yard setback where 10 is required. Currently, it's 4.2 feet. Secondly, the front yard setback, which we're asking 7.8 where 10 is required, is currently 8.2, so we're actually becoming more compliant with our setback on that line, on that item. On the side yard setback of 3.1, where five foot is required, we're maintaining the 3.1 that's existing, and secondly, on the side yard setback where four foot is required, where we're asking for four foot, where five foot's required, we currently have four feet. The rear yard setback is generated by the fact that this house sits, currently sits so close to Broadway, literally when you walk down the sidewalk, you can hand somebody off the porch a soda or a drink, or smell their cigarette, or hear their conversation, so there's literally no privacy in the house at all. So what we're also trying to do is to shift the house back off of East Broadway to achieve some separation from the sidewalk, and that's why the rear yard setback was generated. And the front deck, the front deck is again the existing front deck, and the rear deck is a new deck off the back of the house, which would allow them to have living space at the raised, at the raised level of the new first floor, and obviously, we were expanding, the expansion of a non-conforming structure. The house in its new configuration is similar in size to the house directly adjacent to it.
This house?
896 East Broadway, and what we're doing, so it's similar in size to its adjacent partner, and very similar in size to other properties on that side of the house to the westerly portion of East Broadway. The footprint of the building, the addition, is only going to be in the back of the house, so effectively, the East Broadway locate, you know, as you're approaching the house from East Broadway, there would be no change to the street structure other than the house raising up, and the house with the new addition, the addition's in the back of the house on the, I call it the swamp side, on the wetlands area in the back. I've spoken to inland wetlands, and there are no issues with our property because it's all, the property immediately adjacent to them with the Silver Sands State Park is basically uplands with no issues with any encroachments. And as you can see, this is basically what the house begins to look like from East Broadway. The hardships we're looking, basically hardships that are on the, that we looked at were the non-conforming lot size, which is basically what forced me to, you know, having to apply for the variances and trying to convert the house into a full-time, full-size house instead of, you know, basically a summer cottage, which what it's been for the last 40 or 50 years. I have two letters in support of the project, and in addition to that, we will also be improving the parking by having two parking spaces underground, under the house, where there's currently parking on Pleasant, Pleasant for the houses. So that frees up two parking spaces effectively for the neighborhood, which, as you know, in the summertime, the parking's at a premium. Are there any questions?
The picture you just showed, is the front, is that a garage in the front?
No, it's not.
It's not?
No, it's not.
I thought it looked like landscaping right in the front of it there. I have a few other questions, but I think, believe you might have missed, Mr. Soto?
I just have one question. What's the existing square footage of the existing house, and what's the square footage of the addition with the second floor?
The existing square footage is 918 square feet, and with the addition, it goes up to 1,900 square feet, an additional 1,000 square foot.
You have a question, Mr. Haberman?
I just, you're going to raise, the existing house you're raising up and then moving it back and then adding an addition?
That's correct. That's correct.
Some of these in the front are existing conditions right now that you had pointed out to us. I mean, most of this is to the rear. You're going to take down the garage. The rear addition is what, 23, 23-foot long?
By 28.
Gentlemen, I need to remind you to use your microphones, please.
The new addition is 23 feet, and by 28-foot wide, which is the width of the existing house.
And all the variances you're requesting are existing already? They're already non-conforming these, except for the rear yard--
Except for the rear yard.
--the rear yard because of the deck and you pushing the house back?
That's correct.
Okay, and you mentioned that the one, the one front one, the 7.8, that that is less than an encroachment that existed?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the house, the house does not sit on the property square, it sits at an angle, so when I shift it back, that changes that dimension.
Mr. Harris, can I ask you a question? The total percentage on the lot here, is it from the existing, with the addition?
The zoning, there's a zoning table under, on your site plan, on the upper right-hand corner. Mr. Is that mine?
It's pretty small.
Well, if you look down at the bottom, the existing lot coverage is 31.8, the proposed is 37, the maximum allowed is 65, so that's not a problem. The building area is also doesn't exceed what's allowed. Do you have this site plan, this little one?
Any other questions? No other questions, okay. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed? Are you speaking in favor, anyone?
Good evening. My name is Corrine Crane. I do own the property, so I guess I am speaking in favor. Also, one of my neighbors on the first street after Pleasant came over to my house last night and said she was sorry she couldn't come, she had just come in very, very late, but she hoped that everything went, she has just raised her house, that, you know, she hoped everything went fine, and I said, "Thank you very much." So it's a very tiny little house, 890 square feet, so it's not going to be gigantic because I'm too old to take care of a gigantic house, but anyways, that's all I have to say, and I do also speak for my neighbors who are doing the same thing that I am doing, and I think their plans are wonderful, and they're also retiring, so we're all in the same boat trying to--
Okay, so right now, we're talking about your property.
Oh, okay, all right. Yes, so I'm, you know, definitely in favor. It's a little tiny. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Anyone else speaking in favor?
I'm Eden Diamond. I'm Corrine's next-door neighbor, and I think it will just add to the neighborhood.
Can you identify yourself and your address?
Eden Diamond, from 904 East Broadway, and I support the project. I think it will just enhance the neighborhood.
Thank you. I have to ask, is there anyone here opposed to this application? Okay. Any other questions of the board? No? Okay. This hearing's closed. Okay. What are your thoughts? Mr. Soto?
I don't have a problem with it. I think he's done a nice job, and he's keeping in line with the house, they're pushing it back, and it's a small house, and he's added, you know, just a master and a pantry, so it's not, I don't think he's gone overboard. I have no problem with this.
Any other comments? No? Okay. Want to make a motion, anyone?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Approval is based on the corner lot and the narrowness of the existing lot.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With motion.
Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
Mr. Vicino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion that passes.
Item number two, 904 East Broadway, Zone R5, Robert Tobin, architect for Howard Diamond and Edna Diamond, owners, vary sections 3-1-4-1, south front yard setback to 1.8 feet where 10 feet required, north side yard setback to 1.6 feet where five feet required, north side yard setback to 2.8 feet where five feet required, west rear yard setback to 10 feet where 20 feet is required, building lot area to 47 percent where 45 percent required, section 4-1-4, north rear yard deck projection to four feet where 16 feet permitted, north rear yard deck projection to 2.8 feet where five feet permitted, south rear yard deck projection to 1.8 feet where, 1.8 feet where eight feet permitted, various sections 6-3-2, expansion of non-conforming structure.
Mr.? My name is Robert Tobin, Robert L. Tobin, architect, 115 Wigwam Lane, Stratford, Connecticut. This property, again, in running through the variances, let me get background. Again, this will be a retirement home for this couple. They've been 10-plus year residents. They're selling their current permanent home in Fairfield and have decided to relocate to Milford, and the additional house, again, was a summer cottage that has been adapted to full-time use. The house gets utilized virtually every weekend by the couple. They have, Mrs. Diamond has developed a handicap with a degenerative back disorder, which will put her in a wheelchair in the next probably 10, 15 years somewhere, hopefully, maybe not sooner. She's, we're keeping our fingers crossed that nothing happens with it, and she's currently on disability, which required us to, as far as raising the house, that we wanted to put in an elevator, and while we were putting in the elevator and the support stairs for the structure, we decided that it might be behoven to us to improve the first floor level of the house and add a master bedroom, because currently, the bedrooms are about nine by 10 square feet in the front of the house, and there's two of them, so they're less than standard-type houses or bedrooms for full-time residents, and one of those bedrooms goes away, but as we raise the house, I have to create a new front entry to the house, so what I did was put the front stair in. I added a front stair to the house, and that front stair comes into one of the bedrooms, which makes it a foyer, and it's actually a small space for a foyer for a house of like this size. The addition on the side here is a current sunroom, which sits there, and it's basically a passive solar addition that's been added to the house many years ago, and we chose to keep that in place because in the wintertime, it actually provides solar heating for the interior of the house, and we chose to keep that versus remove it as a structure. So you'll see the greenhouse on the side, and it really serves quite of a purpose in the summertime. It's the current vestibules of the house, and in the summertime, you walk in there and it's literally, you know, 120 degrees because of all the sun, so it's not a very good entry into the main house. And in addition, as we were raising it to meet the FEMA regulations, we added the parking spaces underneath, and because of the requirement of trying to upgrade the house, again, very similarly, we tried to make everything operate on the main level with the exception of the master bedroom, because we couldn't keep the master bedroom, there was no room on the first floor for the master bedroom. Knowing we were putting in an elevator, I chose to put the, again, put a small addition on the back of the house and then overlay a portion of the existing structure that was currently not cathedral-ceilinged, and make it, so I expanded the first floor of the existing structure up, so rather than, you know, rather than create too much space on the first floor, there is a full, not a full second floor, but a 50% second floor on top of. But again, this house, the whole front half of the house has cathedral ceilings existing, so I really couldn't overlay it with a new floor, with another full layer, and staying within the existing footprint. There just wasn't room for the elevator and the stairs and kitchen expansion and what have you. From the setbacks, again, very similarly to the previous project, the front yard setback is 1.8 feet where 10 is required, and existing is 1.8 feet, so there's no change. The side yard setback, 1.6 where five is required, and again, it's an existing 1.6 feet. The side yard setback at 2.8 where five is required is currently 1.6 at the garage location, and the side yard setback is 10 feet, or rear yard setback is 10 feet where 20 is required, and the existing garage that we're tearing down is one foot. So in effect, I'm increasing, moving, tearing down the garage and moving the structure somewhat forward with the new construction, so it won't occupy as much of the property from front to back as it currently does. The deck is of a rather large size because the client requested that, because of her back injury, she felt that she could do her gardening on the deck, so we're actually planning a portion of the deck as a garden for vegetables and, so that she does not have to go up and down the elevator to go down to what effectively would be potted plants on the first floor, because there's, the lot is virtually covered. In this case, we are expanding the size of the building by 2% on its footprint by going through this, which I felt was as modest an increase as I could get. I tried to keep things to the minimalist as I possibly could. Again, in this case, we're picking up two additional parking spaces on the street. The setbacks in the rear are less than they currently are, and I also have two letters for submission for approval from neighbors, and my hardships are the handicap issues of trying to add the elevator, and again, the non-conforming lot size. Are there any questions?
Mr. Soto?
Could I have the square footage on the existing and the proposed?
Yeah.
Together?
The existing square footage is 1,022, and we're adding 1,200 additional square feet, so bring it up to 2,200 square feet.
Okay. Would you state the hardship again on that, on this one here?
Pardon?
Would you state the hardship again, please? Because the expansion is kind of extreme.
The hardship is the fact I have to add a handicapped elevator and supporting stairs to, you know, that are non-existing in a multi-story residence, and the non-conforming lot size. This lot is much smaller, actually, than the lot on, any other lot on the block, actually, and the house that we're putting up is actually smaller than the adjacent houses to our north or to our east, and so from that standpoint, from a visual, the front, again, the front of the house is lower than the existing structures adjacent to us to the east, and-- the east and the additions in the rear, and thus visually has no impact to the neighborhood as you're going up and down Broadway, other than the fact it's raised structure, as you're starting to see propagate all the way along Broadway now.
What is the height of this house?
The house?
Says 34.5 on the...
It's, yeah, I've shown it at 34.5, it's not going to be, I'm probably going to try and reduce it as much as possible, I've still structurally, haven't figured out the structural beams yet and things like that, so I can, know I can do the house within that.
And you mentioned, you mentioned the elevator is part of kind of a hardship, and, you know, we understand those things when you do have to put an elevator in, but are you thinking that that really affects the backside of the house and why the rest of the house is so large?
The rest of the house is large because the existing spaces that compromise the existing, because it's a one-story house currently, are two bedrooms that are 10 by, as I said, 10 by 9, then there's a living room that's literally 22 feet, 23 feet by about 15 feet, and then there's a kitchen adjacent to that with a bathroom, and then there's a mudroom in the rear, so there's not, I didn't have any room within the existing square footage to add a master bedroom, to put in a second, a stair, and so thus I had to go to the rear to find room for the stair, the elevator, a decent kitchen, a decent bathroom on the first floor, and so that's why things migrated to the rear.
That's why it's 78 feet long, the house, I mean, the house is 78, about 78 feet long, I mean, the width, I don't know what the width is, but it's...
It's 78 feet with the deck in the back, and I also needed room for the mechanical, because there, again, I took a portion of the deck and added, and added my mechanicals on the deck, because again, I had no room inside the house for mechanicals, and as I mentioned, the front of the house is currently a cathedral ceiling, which I didn't, I couldn't build on top of, and so again, everything kind of shifted to the rear, and to find room for the mechanicals, not just the condensers, which are also on the deck, but the actual mechanical room itself added the additional 10 feet to the rear, and the addition is effectively only 13 feet on the first floor, and on the second floor, it's 20, 33 feet on the second floor before it converts to second, before it converts to a cathedral, the front half, which is cathedral ceiling.
Go ahead, Mr. Sodha.
I don't have a problem with most of this, but what I feel is, like, your pantry area in there and the kitchen, you could, you could shorten this up a little bit and get, get your building, percentage of the building under, you're over by 2 percent right now.
There's a reason the pantry is that way for a religious kitchen, it's a full kosher kitchen, which requires me to...
Well, I mean, I do see room to, there's room to make this, get 2 percent building less, it's not much we're asking for, but I'd like to see you get under that, under that percentage, you know what I mean, and come in line with that, because you are putting a lot here, and I understand the handicap elevator and all that, and you got to have bigger hallways and all that, and so, but I'd like to see you, you know, maybe shrink up that area, I know the bathroom's big for the handicap, but you could, you could, there's room there, without changing your design, you know what I mean?
In effect, I'm ending up taking out space out of, you know, I can't change the existing house, that's the problem, because of the structure of it, so in effect...
How about right here, where it says existing sunroom, you've got this jog in the house, what if you filled that in and put two... That would give you some more kitchen room, and, you know, you could shrink it down, that would increase, yeah, you're right, yeah.
Mr. Vazino, go ahead, you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I'm on the same page as Mr. Sodha, and you're going to have to get it through the board, I can only speak for myself, and I'm hearing what Mr. Sodha's saying, I'm just, I'm distressed, because you did a nice job staying within many of the setbacks, but unlike the previous application, you went over on the percent of the building lot, and, you know, we're already looking at a non-conforming structure, I don't want to add on to that, you know, I'm appreciative of where you are mitigating or staying the same, but adding on to it, when you're adding, when you're doubling the size of the house in totality, it's a little much for me, sitting on this board, to see, so I hope you take that under advisement.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? No? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application?
Well, I can't let the women speak all, say everything tonight, but the impression we have from the time...
We need, we need your name, sir.
Joseph Williams. From the time that...
We need your address also, sir.
My...
Your address?
14 Ashington Drive in Austin, New York. And I dare say, okay...
Excuse me, sir, can you just repeat your, your surname for me, your last name?
Williams.
Williams, okay.
Yeah. All right. So I have to say, first of all, I thank you for the, for the approval of the prior request, because now you allow us, okay, to really live together, get married, et cetera, because before we couldn't do that, as you pointed out, with 900 square feet, it's not much space. In regard to the diamonds, the perception we have, okay, is that, you know, you know better than I do, but the perception that we have is that it's not really a big deal, it's, it might be technically in your minds, okay, but the way we see it is that we're just going up together and moving back a little bit, so, you know, we don't have any problem with it at all. I mean, if I, if I did, okay, believe me, I would say something about it, but we really don't have any problem with it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone opposed? Any more questions? Hearing's closed. Okay, gentlemen and lady, your thought?
I think there's room for, to make a few changes here, in breaking down the total footage, the house is quite long, this gentleman said that he didn't have a problem with that, but we just keep setting precedents up and down this, the whole East Broadway.
Well, I think...
Letting everybody have pretty much their desires as to, you know, what they should have.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman, for jumping in there, but, you know, we have to think for the entire city and for, like you said, the precedent that we set, and although, you know, the direct neighbor may not have problems with it, I mean, I'm sure that other individuals on that street may have problems with it, so I appreciate his perspective, but as members of the board, we have to think for the entire city.
Any other comments? Need a motion? Maybe?
I would like to make a motion to deny without prejudice, to give them an opportunity to bring it back and take our comments under advisement and reduce the building area percentage on the lot.
Second?
We have a motion to deny without prejudice, we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With motion.
Mr. Sodha?
With the motion.
Mr. Vazino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, denied without prejudice.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, we're going to discuss... Do we have to, or is this going to be part of the meeting?
Yes, it is, you have, you have to consider and adopt the schedule for next year.
Okay.
Everybody's, should have a copy of the calendar in their folder, of the voting members, anyway, if you might want to share it with Bob and Gary.
Now, earlier we had sort of floated the idea, at least I floated the idea, of the board taking a hiatus either once or twice a year. If you look at the schedule, February and August are highlighted just as suggestions.
Okay, board members, I have my thoughts on this, and I want to know what yours might be.
I kind of agree with you, Joe, on that, I think we have alternates that fill in, you know, vacations and stuff like that, and that gives them a chance to vote and stuff, so it doesn't bother me coming out every, every month.
Well, I know I'd sent an email out to you, some of you, and that we'd be looking at this, this evening, and my thoughts were, and I did look, and all of the boards in Milford do meet monthly, and I also think that if we were to change this, we should, this should be cleared by the mayor's office, I would think. I know it'd be a good idea to maybe change some of them, but I'd like to leave things just the way they are.
Yeah, I don't see it as a burden to, you know, to keep it at 12, and I think we have a, you know, we have a pretty much full staff board, I think we have one open spot, but I think rotating in the members that don't always get a chance, I think is always good, and I don't like to be a trendsetter, in this case, I don't think we need to be the first one to, to reduce, to be honest with you, but that's just my opinion.
And I don't know if you want to hold off the public and have them wait another month in case somebody had something and trying to go for the board, you know, and you have to put it off a month, because I don't know if it's fair to them, so...
I appreciate that you looked at all the other boards, and if everyone else is meeting monthly, I'd hate for us to be the ones to hold people up.
Okay.
There's another, another date on there you should consider, on the hearing dates, April 11th, that's the first day of Passover, right, Meg? Do we want to change that to the 10th?
We had rescheduled, as you know, a couple of months ago, to accommodate the voting, to make sure that we didn't create a hardship for people who needed to vote on Election Day, because when Stephen and I put the calendar together, we hadn't realized that the 8th would be Election Day, so we rescheduled it to the Monday. Monday is typically an Aldermanic Day, Wednesdays are usually available, but the first night of Passover, I know, would be an issue for Arnie, who's recording, and it might be an issue for any prospective new board members, so something to think about more.
Again, I think...
Or applicants, as John said, yes.
I think the percentage of applicants would be minimal in that, you know, and I think we should leave it the way it is on a Tuesday. Yes, we have to change it for the election, and that, that's a very important reason to change it, but I don't, I don't think we should pick Passover as opposed to Easter or, you know, Good Friday or that kind of thing, I think it kind of singles out the reasoning why you're changing it, so I think we should leave it, it is, that's my opinion. Any other opinions?
I don't think changing it would be singling anything out, in this particular year, it happens to fall on that holiday, if in another year it falls on a different holiday, then that would be discussed in that year, I don't think this is singling anybody out, I think it might be a nice gesture, actually.
Right, I agree, and I think that one of the main reasons why we considered maintaining our 12 monthly meetings was to the betterment, to the appreciation of the applicants, and I think we can make a small accommodation in this case to the, ensure that every applicant has an opportunity to come and move it, I guess to Wednesday would be my suggestion, if, if the aldermen do meet.
All right, so if you...
What I can do is research the calendar as to what has been claimed for next year in April, if there's a conflict, maybe we could just, if the board would give me some latitude to do it someday during that week, preferably Wednesday.
We can, we can leave the schedule alone and then, and do some more research, and if we really need to move it, then, you know, then we can at a later date, and we don't have to make a blind decision tonight.
All right, so your target is going to be for a Wednesday? Okay. Do we need a motion on that, too?
Yeah, you should, and this would carry by a simple majority.
All right, so we need, we need an entire motion on this calendar.
And the notion should...
With, with the amended, or the change in April, to be a Wednesday, okay? Who wants to make that motion? Anyone? Or I'll do it, doesn't matter. Okay, yeah, all right, I'll make a motion to keep our calendar, the second Tuesday of every month, with the exception in April with Passover, which is a Monday evening, I believe, isn't it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday evening, okay, that we would, we would meet on the Wednesday of that April. In fact, if there is an opening, there probably should be, it's a Wednesday. Okay, we need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, glasses. We have any old business? Staff update? Minutes, approval at the minutes from November?
I read them, Mr. Chairman, they looked fine to me.
I make a motion to approve. The corrections, everything's fine? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I guess that's it. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. We didn't discuss what we have next month, so we're already adjourned, we have, what, three, four, maybe?